Sam, please do so. Put your hand over your heart. Ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't think we need prayer yet. I'll save that for later. You may be seated. And I would like to welcome you to our first quote-unquote "normal" chamber, Sierra Madre Chamber and Women's Club-sponsored forum. Because in 2020, we had to have it outside because of the pandemic and in a different format, so we're very happy to be here today. We have a couple of housekeeping items. I want to thank our deputy city manager Laura Aguilar and Natalia Flores from the fire department for helping us with our setup. And as you can see, for people who are at home, it is streaming live on Channel 3. And also, you'll be able to go to the city's website and click and look later. Our purpose for this forum and every forum that we've ever held is to help inform the public so that you can, as a voter, make informed decisions, have some idea. Don't vote for Glenn just because, you know, he's got a place in Hawaii that I like to go to. But it is very serious and it's a good opportunity to get the questions that you have answered and for you to assess those people who are brave enough to offer their services and run for a public office. That is not an easy thing. So first of all, I want to ask the five candidates for city council to stand up. I have a little ritual here. And I'll let you maul this over while we do a couple of other things. Most of the questions will be addressed to all the candidates. So who goes first? We're going to start out with a speaking order, and I'm going to let them pick a number. And for those of you who don't know, this is David Garcia, you come in, turn around and wave. Colin Barr, you very soulful person, right there. Mary Jean Goss, two-time mayor. Kristine Moran. And Chris Low. And you may take the seat at the table. And that's your speaking order. That is your speaking order. There's one, two, three, four, five. So pick. You don't get the middle seat just because you're mayor. And we have signs that indicate who you are. In case you're successful, you'll know what you're...
Two.
You'll know what you are.
Two's over there?
All right.
I know. I'm three.
That little chair out of the way. We have a timekeeper. His name is Glenn Lambden. Candidates, you should know this, and the audience should know this. Glenn is sitting right there. And Glenn is an MMA expert, et cetera. He's very shy, but he has a job for a reason. Because this is a very passionate community. And so, the timekeeper, we're going to try to give everybody a fair amount of time, and we're going to try to be consistent. It is not an easy task to run a forum and make everybody happy, okay? We are going to do our best. We are only human. As those of you who read page two of the newspaper read this morning, where the typo said 7:00 PM, fortunately, there was another ad that said 4:00. So part one, we're supposed to meet the candidates 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock. We may run a little over, okay? We want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. We also want you to remember, in addition to the purpose of this being to inform the public, the day after, November 9th, which happens to be my father's birthday, November 9th, we'll still be neighbors. Okay? We will still be neighbors. We have been through wars before. Isn't that right there? And we don't always agree. You don't always agree with your family. For heaven's sake, you don't always agree with your mother. At least, my kids didn't. So let us be civil, and let us be kind, and let us listen and think about your questions. We're not going to ask the same question over and over and over again, but we will do our best to get everybody's issues covered. The first half is for the five candidates, and we're going to ask them to start with a three-minute opening. And hopefully, you will tell this audience why you are running for city council. So number one, who would that be? Okay.
Are you ready for me?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the Chamber Women's Club for organizing this. Thank you, Mayor Lambden, for being the timekeeper. I'll try to stop when you put that red sign up. It's been a privilege and an honor for the past two years to serve as your council member. As you recall, we had a vacancy, and I've only been serving for two years. I ran for the two-year term, and now I'm back campaigning again. I'm currently your mayor pro tem. I was appointed by the current council to be the mayor pro tem, and it's really been an honor. At the last election, I stated that as your council member, I'll make certain that we have a responsible budget. We continue reductions in our pension liability, which was a big drag on our budget, while maintaining the services that our community demands, right? So I'm happy to say that myself, along with the colleagues on the council, we've accomplished that, and we continue to accomplish that. In the two years I've been on council, we've done quite a few things, especially given that we were in a global pandemic. We've passed two very responsible budgets using zero-based budgeting, starting and making sure that every department, and I see some people in the... that our department had shaken their head, justify each and every expense that they're going to have in the budget. Like I said, we've continued to pay down our pension liability. We are unique in the San Gabriel Valley and even California at the levels that we are funded for our pensions. We completed a beautiful refresh of Kirsten Cord. That's wonderful there. And that's been in the works for over a decade when I was on the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. We broke ground and completed a solar array project that will not only offset some energy costs. If you look at the warrants, you see how much we play in energy for running our water system, but it also is going to offset a ton of carbon emissions. And that's going online very soon, next week, hopefully. We've increased our city assets. We had excess cash because of the way funding worked, so we had excess reserves. And what did we do with that? We didn't leave it as cash, because cash doesn't really do anything for the citizens, and it doesn't earn much interest, given the interest that we can earn for a municipality. So we bought a building. It was a rare opportunity, and we bought the Bank of America building at a very good price, and we were able to... we're going to be able to have our public safety police officers working there. Just a little bit of background, if you don't know me, I've been a resident for about 20 years. I love this city. I'm supposed to say why I'm running. Well, I'm currently a council member, and I feel like I have much, much more to do to continue the good works of the current council. I grew up, or I married into a family that... where public service was very important. They instilled that in me, and I need to cut it off there, but I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Number two. Who is that?
Right here.
Colin.
Thank you to the Women's Club and the Chamber for hosting this forum today. I'm sure a lot of effort was... has gone into the planning of this event, and all of us here, thank you for that. For those of you who have not met me, I'm Colin Barr, and I've lived in Sierra Madre with my wife Megan for almost 25 years. I'm a first-time candidate, but I am very familiar with how city government works. That's because I'm an attorney who's represented cities, school districts, and water districts for most of my career. For over 25 years, I've attended board and council meetings, advised staff and elected officials on important legal issues, and always encouraged transparency in the process. My specialty is real estate and construction law, so although I've never run for office, my background would be an asset to council, as I would review issues and make decisions as both a concerned citizen and an experienced attorney. A few months ago, I went before the Planning Commission to appeal staff's decision granting a permit to triple the size... almost triple the size of a house. While the Planning Commission agreed with me and the permit was withdrawn, I'm running for city council, because during that process, it was clear to me residents are often not consulted until after decisions have already been made. I believe there needs to be more community input and transparency in the decision-making process, whether it's a building permit for a remodel or rezoning a property to build 42 homes. Our residents need to be told why their council are making the decisions they're making. One example of this is the Meadows Project. After it was approved, some residents have been told that a big factor in the decision was the threat of a lawsuit by the developer. Well, if that was the reasoning, tell the community the developer was threatening a lawsuit, and let them know the threat had merit or not. This goes for all decisions, regardless of what side of the issue you're on. I've talked to a lot of residents in the past few months as I've gone door-to-door, and the one overriding concern I've heard is that people feel they are not listened to, that decisions are made without considering what people want. As your councilman, I will change that and make sure decisions are made with transparency and your input. Thank you.
Hello, Sierra Madre, and thank you to the Women's Club, and also thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity. I am Christine Low, or Chris Low. I have been a resident of Sierra Madre for 48 years, and I'm committed to being a lifelong active participant in this amazing town. I am a teacher at the Glendale Unified School District, and I am the coordinator there for the Public Safety Academy. My partner Dan Bell and I have both worked for the city and grown up here, and I can't be more blessed to have his support in running for council. Why am I running for Sierra Madre Council? First, it's because I love this town. I've grown up here, and the neighbors and mentors, who are here in the audience today as well, I've known and have shaped me into the woman I am today. My family has been in Sierra Madre for five generations. Being a positive member of the community is ingrained in my DNA. My uncle, Albert Low, was president of the Pasadena School Board and responsible for desegregating Pasadena in the late 1960s and early 1970s. My mom taught Sunday School at Ascension, where I served as an acolyte. My dad was a Sierra Madre Little League coach, and they helped raise and mentor many of the kids who are leaders in our community today. "It takes a village" is the epitome of how we work here in Sierra Madre. I have learned how to be an effective leader, how to be a proponent for my neighbors, because I too have dedicated my life to giving back to the community. For 15 years, I worked to protect our town as part of the Sierra Madre Fire Department. I was the first female captain, and my dad and I were the first father-daughter duo. My father was chief of the Sierra Madre Fire Department and retired after 38 years of service. As soon as I retired from SMFD, I couldn't stop volunteering. I've been on the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. I've been a member of the Friends of the Library Wine Tasting Committee. I currently serve as the Sierra Madre Pioneer Cemetery Board Member and the Sierra Madre Fourth of July Committee. Growing up here has meant that I have seen many years of transition and growth and have seen all the events up and down that have happened to Sierra Madre for almost half a century. The second reason I'm running for city council is that I know it is one of the best ways to invest and assure that Sierra Madre keeps its small-town feel while maintaining the services and resources that our residents need and deserve. My priorities are, to one, maintain and assure fiscal, environmental, and sound infrastructure and resources for the present and the future. Number two, to keep the ambiance of this small-town feel of Sierra Madre while also transitioning towards the growth every city is faced with. Number three, use my leadership skills and willingness to remain kind and respectful of others, to work hard for my constituents, and to keep Sierra Madre this amazing little gem for generations. If elected, I will listen to our citizens, collaborate with my fellow council members, do my due diligence and research on all issues and actions put before me, and come to consensus for what is best for Sierra Madre. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Christine Corbett-Moorean. I did not grow up here. I grew up in the Midwest, in a suburb of Columbus, Ohio, called Grandview Heights. It had a Grandview Ave, just like Sierra Madre. And when I came out to California after earning my PhD in physics to live the American dream here in California, the land of opportunity, I chose, after working at Caltech and NASA JPL, to live in Sierra Madre. And I was privileged to be able to afford a house here and start my, I hope, multi-generational endeavor and a community very similar to the one that I grew up in. Grandview Heights, Ohio, is about 2/3 the size of Sierra Madre, but it has a better pool, a better library, and a better high school. It also has better senior resources, and it's more walkable and bikeable, although the weather isn't as good. I see a lot of opportunity to build on all these great strengths. We have an excellent pool. We have an excellent library, and we have an excellent school system to build a future for my children, age two and four. Currently, I'm a engineering manager at a company called Planet Labs that works to combat climate change and promotes political stability. I'm also a volunteer parent-teacher at the Sierra Madre Community Nursery School. It was a year waiting list for me to get my kids in that opportunity, and it was many years before I had the chance to buy a house here. I know that my children, growing up, I will have to help build the city I want them to grow up in and build upon our fantastic opportunities here in California and especially here in Sierra Madre. In addition, I have to ensure that my kids want to live here when they grow up and have their grandkids here, and they don't live somewhere else in LA or someone else in America because it's unaffordable for them. So I really want the same opportunity that so many of us have had here in Sierra Madre for my family as well. In addition, I have seen the problems in the past few years that are global problems coming root here in our city that has a lot of legacy from perhaps the 1950s that we have to build on and be progressive about. So this can be things like climate change, the fires over the hill causing my family to evacuate when my daughter was just two months old. It can be safety issues as we're checking on our elderly neighbors or our families with children that are sick or potentially having issues. It can be gun violence. It can be women's rights. All these global issues that we can take small actions and be an example city here in California, here for Los Angeles, here for America, and here for the world. I hope I will provide a reasoned voice in the council. I have managed a $45 million federal agency program. I'm currently an engineering manager and a scientist, and I hope my perspective as a young mother with a family will bring a valid and valued perspective to the council. Thank you.
I don't smile as good as her. I want her smile. Chris is a smile killer.
Me too. You just can't see it.
I can't see your smile. I'm Gene Goss. I'm mayor of the city, and I have an opening statement here, and I tried to think about what I want to communicate with you tonight. And I guess my... I want to talk to you about experiences I've had that I think many of you've had. Have you ever watched children run out on the Heasley Field in their uniforms? Have you ever enjoyed live music down at Memorial Park or seen a movie down there? Have you ever watched firefighters in their fire trucks go by on the Fourth of July Parade? That, in a nutshell, is why I'm running for reelection for a third time. It's a deep commitment I have to this very, very special place. My wife and I have lived here for 26 years, which seems like yesterday. We've raised our son here, and I'm just 100% committed to preserving and enhancing the magic of Sierra Madre. Eight years ago, the city was in significant debt and near bankruptcy. Some advocated closing our police department. Our water system suffered 31% losses through leaking water mains. Community trust in the competence of our government was declining. My newly-elected city council colleagues, and one of them is right here, council member Rochelle Iris-Mendy, thank you for being here, Rochelle, and I turned it around. Today, we enjoy a $9 million reserve. Our per's pension liability is 85% paid up. Mayor Pro Tem alluded to that. And our police department is fully funded. Water system losses have been dropped from 31% to 11%, and they're continuing to fall. Additionally, we finally secured the $10 million we need to build our citizens the first-class library they deserve. My priorities, finances, I think, are always number one. I will continue to exercise good financial stewardship. I'll continue to insist that all expenses be justified each time a budget is proposed using zero-based budgeting, again, alluded to by Mayor Pro Tem, and not just automatically approving them with a rubber stamp. I will continue our drive to resolve the burden of future pension liabilities. Public safety, I will continue to support our police and fire departments with the funding necessary to keep medical and emergency response times low and public safety service high. I'll prioritize funding of our water main replacement program, and finally, I will work to ensure that the renovation of the new police department building and library are done on time and under budget. I'm honored to have the endorsement of all four of my council colleagues for reelection. Working with my colleagues, I will make sure that Sierra Madre remains the community we love. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 8th.
Now, we get to the fun part. And the first question, these questions have come from all of you, and yes, a decision will be made as to which ones are heard. Some of them may be deferred until we get to measure HR. Many of them say the same thing, and you may see some of them rephrased. We don't want to be here all night. But, a couple of things. Number one, no props, you guys. No props. We're not doing that. And this question is a legitimate question, and it made me laugh, and I can't imagine who might have said this. To all of you, please raise your hand if you have donated to the Sierra Madre Community Foundation, and please tell us what you donated for. I can't imagine who would have put that in there. Okay. Have you?
Yes. As you may or may not know, I was a board member, a secretary, the treasurer, and the chair of the foundation. Every year, I gave at least a minimum of $250 just to the general fund. I'm still donating to the community foundation. More recently, the fund that's being run for the improvement at our post office to have a responsible landscaping there. Prior to that, I gave to the general fund again. I did give money for the gate that was up at... that's up at the trailhead for Mount Wilson Trail. I've given to Fletcher Fund, and yeah, I... obviously, being on that board for eight years, it's near and dear to my heart. I did not put that question in myself, but it's a great organization for this, as all the civic organizations are in town. So I encourage all of us to support those organizations, because without them, we don't get the nice things that we have in town, because our budget in our city doesn't... can't pay for all those nice things. We need the philanthropy of our individuals in town to fund a lot of the great stuff we have. Thank you.
I neglected to say that for responses, it's a minute and a half.
Did I go over? I'm sorry.
You got to wait.
Oh, okay.
All right. Colin?
Well, I have not donated to the community foundation, so... but I have, in the past, donated to the Fourth of July Parade Committee. I'm a donor... I've donated to the Methodist Hospital and the Pasadena Symphony, and one of the biggest and dearest causes to my wife and I's heart is the Optimist Youth Home and Family Services in Eagle Rock, which served... well, until last year, served at-risk kids between the ages of 12 and 18 years old. I was on the board for 15 years at Optimist, and we believe that that was an organization, because Megan worked there as well for 20 years, that was a real game changer for the youth in Los Angeles and our community.
Okay. Chris?
I have. I've also been a member of the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. As soon as I retired from the fire department, I joined the community foundation because great leaders asked me to join. I've donated to probably every single thing that's ever come up, including Huck Finn Day, Sierra Madre Little League and softball league, when they need money for whatever they need money for. Originally, a lot of the money donated to Sierra Madre was through... through youth activities, at least, was through the Sierra Madre Fire Department's foundation and their association, which also coincided with some of the same members on the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. And when Sierra Madre Community Foundation was founded with some of the great leaders here in Sierra Madre, it really took off, and it's been such an important part. And every... what they do really well, too, is not only give back to the community and help support everything that we need, and we love to make this town small and amazing, is that they really encourage diversity in their... within their membership, and so it rotates pretty frequently. And so I encourage everyone to join and also give to the Sierra Madre Community Foundation.
Christine?
I have not donated to the foundation. I look forward to being more involved in the future. Sounds like a wonderful endeavor. Thank you.
The Goss family has made donations to the foundation. My wife writes the checks, and I don't remember exactly what years they were and amounts, but we also regularly go to the whiskey tasting, which is put on by the foundation, and most of that ticket, which is pretty considerable in cost, is donated to the foundation as well. I also donate, and I'm just going off the top of my head here, to the Police Officers Association religiously in town and the Rose Float Association. My wife and I are big supporters of them as well.
Okay. Thank you. I have to ask for forgiveness, but we also have two volunteers to my left. Mary Carney, who represented past president of the Women's Club, and Dave Felk. And they are the recipients, and they process the questions as they come to me, and we want to thank you for volunteering. Okay. This one, it's not about HR, but it's a burning question in many of your minds. And I'm going to start at this end, and we'll work around. What influence does the Sierra Madre City Council have on new businesses opening in town? How can the council ensure that it is a good, balanced variety of products and services? And I won't read the last sentence. So whoever wrote this, you knew where I left off.
Could you repeat that, Susan?
What influence does the Sierra Madre City Council have on new businesses opening in town? How can the council ensure there is a good balance/variety of products and services?
It's my turn?
Yes.
Okay. Well, short answer, we can't. We don't have control over the businesses that come in and out of town. It's an open market. But we certainly try to influence it. I am the liaison from the council to... I am the liaison from the council to the Chamber of Commerce, and the first place you turn is the Chamber of Commerce to make sure they are supported ably, that they have the resources they need, and that they are out there proactively recruiting the kinds of businesses that we'd like to have in optimal terms. But those terms are optimal in our minds. You still have to deal with the high rents that businesses have to pay, and we have other challenges that businesses tell us about all the time. But I think that's an ongoing project. I think when the council hears about challenges downtown with parking, with lighting, with maintenance of the streets and things of that nature, we have always acted. We are, we're very responsive to the business community here in Sierra Madre. But it's a partnership between us and the Chamber and, of course, the citizens themselves.
Thank you. So, I think the city council can have some influence through not only zoning policies, but also the wonderful things that they have done in COVID, such as allowing businesses to expand into the street and making our streets and our downtown more vibrant and more accessible to a variety of folks. Ultimately, our businesses are driven by the people who shop at them. So we will have 40 nail salons if we have, you know, 40,000 people who want their nails done. We will have a vibrant downtown when we have a lot of folks coming to our downtown who want to spend money because they find it delightful and lovely to be there. I find it delightful and lovely to be there. When I grew up in Grumby Heights, Ohio, that has one of the most lively downtowns in, a small downtown in Columbus, Ohio, and they have wonderful restaurants that attract people from all over the city. And I think that we can take small steps in making a lively and vibrant downtown to welcome visitors on the weekends and other places, and also to encourage us all to shop local, shop at tailors instead of TJ's, et cetera, and to visit our downtown as frequently as possible. And that can make it more delightful and have a more variety of businesses, as well as being welcoming to people of all ages in our community. Thank you.
So, years ago, I wasn't sure, but I could have sworn Sierra Madre did have a moratorium on the businesses that were put into town. I'm a big proponent of being a lifelong learner, and I also believe in repeating what goes well for cities as well as stealing what ideas come well for other communities. I don't know the exact reach that the city council does have currently over the businesses that do come in. It is an open market. But I do know the value of helping place businesses that will help our community as well as help that store or that business itself. I'm lucky to be very close to many people that work for other cities and have moved through other cities like Monrovia, Pasadena, and Glendale. And I've seen the way that their city council and their city manager have reached out to different businesses that they think would be very beneficial for their town and helped those new business owners, whether it be through small business loans or whether it be through figuring out where they would place work best in the main area of town. I think that's a great idea. I mean, it is hard having seven nail salons actually right now in town. And I've heard from the businesses that it's a struggle to compete in that way. But there is healthy competition too. So what is that line, and how do you come up with the medium? So I definitely think that's an important aspect to reach out to our businesses.
I think the city does a lot to promote business in our town. There's a lot of community events that bring people into town, whether it's Small Business Friday after Thanksgiving or one of the many events that take place in town. I think the city and the Chamber does a good job of that. But I think that, from what I've experienced talking to small business owners, is that the real barrier to entry is the rents. People can't afford to rent the space to have a business here. And so, if I'm elected, I think the most important thing would be to figure out a way to minimize that barrier and help businesses open up in our town. Whether through, I know in Monrovia, they almost pay people to open up a store in Monrovia in the town. I'm not saying that, but there have to be other ways in which we could help people start a business in our town and thrive. So that would be my goal. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, and, you know, I didn't mention what I do for a living when, during my introduction. I'm an economist, I work full-time as an economist, and I teach finance and economics at university level. And I'm happy to see that there's a lot of economics going on here. We're talking about open markets and markets. To answer the question directly, as a council, we don't have direct influence on what businesses come to town. I think that was the question. Candid Moran did mention that we can do things through zoning. Mayor Goss mentioned that we do have a partnership with the Chamber, and if you're going to open a business, that's generally the first place you would look to. So that's very important. You know, we are thinking about, as a council, some creative ways to get, to not only get businesses in here, but support our current businesses, such as maybe talking to Tesla and having them bring a supercharger in here in town so people can spend 30 minutes in our town spending money here. Encouraging people to attend the plays at the Playhouse. We get a lot of outsiders that come and they spend dollars here. But, you know, we do have all these events, and those events that Canada Barr was talking about, those don't happen, again, without these civic organizations we have here in our town. So I'm forever grateful for the partnerships that we have that come along the city government and get these things accomplished so we can support our local businesses. Thank you.
Okay. Just a point of clarification for the ambiance of our peaceful assembly today. Questions about campaign finance and the candidates. You will have to do your research on your own. They do file campaign contribution statements with the city clerk's office. And so if you want to know who's funding their campaign, look it up. Okay. Next question is on infrastructure. How do you, how do you envision improvements to pipeline replacements, street paving, and other projects? And how will you pay for them? Starting with Edgar. Nobody wanted that first, huh?
I'm sorry, can you repeat it once again, please?
This is a combination of two questions. How do you envision improvements to pipeline replacements, street paving, and other projects? And how do you propose paying for them? So in other words, what are your ideas about how we maintain and improve our current infrastructure? And how are you going to pay for it?
Yeah, that's a very important question. Infrastructure is vitally important for a city. Ideas about how we're going to do it, I think we're actually doing a very good job currently of... And one of the things that a lot of, you know, if you look at your water bill, right, there is the infrastructure surcharge on your water bill. And what does that go to? It goes solely and directly to our water infrastructure. So that's replacing pipes. So that is funded to the tune of a million dollars a year, and we have been doing that. The city has been thoughtful in replacing the worst pipes first and then addressing the pipes that aren't as bad. This year, we have made the good decision to address, instead of running a contiguous line, which is more efficient, you can get more done, some really bad spots within the town and making sure that those water pipes are fixed so we don't have the leaks in the potholes and the patches in your streets. So we're currently doing that and working on that with our Public Works Department and through our, through our partners that actually do the work. As far as street paving and others, most of that is Measure M and Measure R funds, which is, a lot of it's gas tax money. We are currently still, we're almost done paving the whole, going through and repaving the whole city. We have a sidewalk master plan that we've been working on. Just was presented at the last council meeting by Director Semino. So if you want to hop on YouTube and re-watch the last council meeting, a lot of information about how we are repairing our sidewalks, yeah.
Colin?
Yes, thank you. I understand that there are limited dollars to be spent for infrastructure repair and upgrade. That's just a given. I mean, we have a budget and we can't repave all the streets and improve all the pipes in one year. However, I think that there is a good balance between the two. And I've analyzed the city budget, and I've looked at the priorities and the protocol for repaving streets and doing the upgrades to the pipelines. And my one concern would be how those limited funds are spent. Specifically, I noticed that there's been a huge decrease in the amount of money this year that's going to be spent on repaving our roads. I still believe that there are quite a few roads that need to be repaved. And I necessarily would have a good discussion with the Public Works Department and my fellow councilmen on the best protocol and priorities for the spending of our dollars, tax dollars. Thanks.
One thing that I valued in Sierra Madre is the leadership and the directors of each different department in our city really do a great job at planning for the future. It's not a reaction, they plan five years in advance, 10 years in advance. Therefore, they know what's coming. I also learned that when my dad was fire chief, when it came to when you're going to replace your fire engines. We do have limited resources in our town. It's always going to be a struggle because we're a small town. We don't have a huge sales tax income. We do really well at relying on different grants and resources, like the library. In city council meeting, last meeting, which Ed alluded, talked about, there was the plan that was presented for the next four years on replacing the sidewalks. There was also input from the city, which I think is so valuable that so many citizens can come here and feel that they can express themselves and that they can say what we need, which is the important part. We have to listen to what you all need in order to know what we need to fix. So, listening to a mobility-type plan, instead of just the general plan, being a part of what works for our sidewalks, our streets, how we ride bicycles more often now instead of cars and the huge traffic that's impacted us, and replacing the pipes that have aged so much in through the years, it's really up to the community to tell us which ones are bad. And then the Public Works Department's done a great job at assessing and figuring out which ones are the priorities and which ones will get fixed, and then continuing through.
Thank you. I am very impressed with both the culture of planning and foresight that Sierra Madre has as well as the culture of fiscal accountability that the current council has. And I think that that is a great position to be in as all these nationwide changes, climate change, et cetera, come here at home to roost. And we're dealing with also synergistic issues where we can save water and save money if we invest in these things, like the pipeline replacements, et cetera. So I like the fiscal accountability, the planning ahead, and the prioritization of those projects that really have those synergies, where it benefits the community, it long-term will actually be probably a cost savings or an environmental savings. And short-term, the culture of fiscal accountability allows us to make those decisions. Ultimately, we do have to prioritize things, and for me, my priorities are families and safety as well as walkability. And so for families, I'm walking along the street in my stroller because I can't go on the sidewalk because there's not curbs. For walkability, there's bumps along the streets, et cetera. And all these things, I think, have synergies because when people feel safe in their community, they're spending money in their community and they're spending time in their community. Thank you.
Wow, it's a big subject. It's one that I have a very long-term interest in. My former colleague, former mayor, Capoche, is here tonight. He and I sat on the Water Subcommittee, I think, for almost six years together. And as a product of many, many meetings with our utility staff, our Public Works Director, our city managers, we put together plans that were then approved by my council colleagues that put us in the place we're in today. Four years ago, in 2018, we had 31% water leaks in our system. Well, it was that Subcommittee that brought to the council the proposal for a surcharge for the infrastructure. That was our idea. We knew it was not going to go over well, the public means, the public is looking at yet another fee as part of their water bill. Okay, you have to have leaders who are willing to do those things. And we did that. And thank goodness we did it because we have already reduced our water leakage. The single greatest conservation measure we've taken in the last four years was to fix those pipes that we fixed in the last four years with a million dollars a year. That's a lot of pipes. I wanted to just clear the record here, the water utility is its own utility. We don't mix the general fund revenue with it, it has to stand alone. So we do a water rate study every few years, and we're about ready to do another one. And we're going to go back and take another look and see where we're at in all these infrastructural milestones. And we will address it with the new water rate study, which we do on contract with a professional firm that specializes in this.
Thank you. Okay. So... I would like for each of the candidates to give me their thoughts on something that happened last year, I believe. And it has to do with the size of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was reduced from seven members to five. And members of the community, many members of the community, feel that that's not enough representation. Five people on a commission so important is not sufficient. So I would like to hear, starting with our mayor, starting with our mayor, your feelings in terms of the size of the Planning Commission.
Well, I've given that a lot of thought because I was on the council that decided to get all our commissions all on the same plane, to get them all at five members, with the idea of standardization and all the things that sound solid about that idea. I've rethought that over the last few months, particularly with how the Meadows Project has proceeded. I know that we, when something that important is in front of our Planning Commission, if one or two of them are sick or they have to leave town, that leaves the entire city in a lurch. And I think that if we expanded the commission, it gives it a better chance of being able to move forward when there are vacancies because of absences. And so I would be open to a seven-person planning commission again. To me, it's something that we probably should address in the next council.
Thank you. I remember reading the agenda and the minute notes from that meeting. I didn't get a chance to attend that meeting, and it did, you know, on paper, sound like it made sense to standardize. But I agree with Mayor Goss in saying that the Planning Commission's thoughtful deliberations really inform the city council's decisions, and the community's trust in the Planning Commission is of utmost importance so that we can really not have confusion and discourse in the public, but kind of trust in those folks who can really spend the hours and hours and weeks and weeks needed to understand all the trade-offs that we have in the current environment. So I as well would support whatever endeavors needed to be made to increase trust in that Planning Commission, and I think increasing the size could be that. I also think that it does make sense to have some standardization. So I want to revisit the other commissions as well and make sure that the solution fits the bill. There are other options, for example, maybe spinning up a special commission to address a specific issue. And I'd want to explore those other scenarios as well. Thank you.
I agree that increasing the number back to seven from five would probably be so much more appropriate for the city of Sierra Madre. It's been a very taxing job for being on the Planning Commission right now. The hard part is actually getting community members to volunteer that much work and that much effort. It's extremely rewarding. I mean, for those of us who have served on these different committees and groups in Sierra Madre, the payback is worth it. But it is hard to get people to be able to volunteer their time. None of us do this for an income. So I think it does need to be increased, and maybe we need to look into different ways to recruit valuable members in Sierra Madre. Part of being on Planning Commission should also include your knowledge base. Do you have that skill set and that knowledge involved in construction and planning and building? involved in construction and planning and building? And keeping it at seven people creates diversity so that you have different opinions, you have checks and balances more appropriately. And then maybe that would be a solution, is to really look into our community. We all know people that are experts in everything. Having us all outreach to each other and asking, "Why don't you volunteer?" It'd be a great position for you. You'd be great at that job, to include more people to step up.
First of all, having just argued before the Planning Commission, I've realized that the dedication of these people and the time they put in to the position is remarkable. And to volunteer their time like they do is really commendable. And I'm the first one to thank them for that. While I might not agree with everything that they make a decision upon, I know that they're, they listen and they try their best. With that said, I'm very much for increasing the size of the commission to seven people, especially when it was decreased at a time where there was one very important issue that was before the community. I think that the diversity and the input from additional members could only assist and help the process and allow the community to have a say and have more of a, a greater say in the matter that are before the commission. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And, you know, I've been able to talk about Mayor Goss about this because we have something called the Brown Act, and we can't talk about things without the public. And so, I've never heard his position. He's never heard my position. So, it's great to hear that. And yeah, that decision happened on the previous council. And I asked the council members why, and they gave very good reasons why. And I understood it. But when this Meadows Project came around and we got into a conundrum where Commissioner Spears was going to term out and come off on July 30th. And the thing is, if you bring a new commissioner on, they don't have the understanding of the project, and they, they would probably have to recuse themselves and not make a vote. So, Commissioner Spears graciously stayed on for another six months or however long he'll stick around. And we're grateful for him for that. But that opened my eyes to seeing that the Planning Commission works on longer timelines than most of the other commissions. So, I can see a need for having more commissioners. Also, the breadth of what they do is great. It's not just, it's also code, doing, writing our codes and all kinds of other things. It's hard to have Subcommittee's when you only have five. It seems like it's always the same people. So, I understand wanting to revisit specifically the Planning Commission for that reason. And not just because, the hard thing is, sorry, okay.
Thank you. Now, point of personal privilege. I've been involved in Sierra Madre just about 20 years. And one of the things that everybody ought to be concerned with is the diminishing number of volunteers. Volunteers to run for office, volunteers to serve on commissions. And I know, because you know my other hat is being the noisiest person in town, so I know everything that's going on. And so, many of you that are sitting here that have never volunteered or thought about it, there's got to be something that you're willing to invest your time in because all of our commissions, the Planning Commission, we see the same faces over and over again. You get upset with them because you see them over and over again. But when it's time to step up to the plate, it takes an investment. So, I just encourage you to go online to the city. They have a really nice website. Find a place for you. Go to a meeting. Attend it. See what's going on. See if it fits for you. And volunteer. Volunteerism is what sustains this city, at least for the last 20 years. Now, maybe something new is coming along, but it's not on TikTok yet. All right. So, we're getting close to the end of the time for the candidates. And I have two questions. The second question will be part of your closing statement. But the first question will be, do you feel that doing, well, how do you feel about term limits? And I'm going to start with Ed Garcia.
Yeah, and we had this question at the last, at the last candidate forum. How do I feel about term limits overall? Yeah, when we have partisan politics and there is power in one party or in one individual, we know that, we know that you don't run against an incumbent if you're in the same party, right? And sometimes that incumbent needs to go. This is not a partisan position. We are here dedicating our time only for the benefit of the community and the residents. That's why we do this. So, I think, we come to the ballot box every two years, and we have an opportunity to cast a vote. And it's different than statewide, county, well, let's say state and federal. It's very different. I'm happy that Mayor Goss is running because why? We have five candidates up here when we would have had only four, and we have an election. So, I am grateful that we have people that are willing to step up in the public eye, take those shots, and are willing to serve for my behalf as a resident and your behalf. So, here in town, I can see a reason to have it, maybe. But I feel like we haven't informed electorate enough that if that became an issue, that person would get voted out.
Sure. I'm in favor of term limits. I think two terms is enough. I think it gives other people, other residents, a chance to run. It provides for fresh ideas to the council. I think the big argument against term limits, at least, you know, in Congress and things, is that there's a seniority system that if our candidate doesn't get reelected, oh my God, he's not going to be on the Appropriations Committee. That's not, that's not the case in Sierra Madre. We're a little town, and I think it would be best for everyone to get, you know, the chance to run if they want and not to have, you know, somebody that's been there too long. And I also think, I know that there was a non-binding vote back in 1990 where over 87% of the people in our town voted for the two-term limit. It was something like 1,600 to 240. So, I think the people, unless there's been a dramatic shift in thought process, want that. And I think the candidates, at least since, mostly since 1990, have complied with that non-binding request. So, yeah, I'm for limits.
I would say that term limits in the larger government aspect are extremely important. At local aspect, I think it's not as important, especially for a tiny town like Sierra Madre. We just spoke about how we don't have enough people to volunteer. It's true. What was the election prior to this? There was 18 or 16 people polled there and applied to run for city council. This time, we have only five of us, or three spots. So, if we reduced that, then again, you're not getting the diversity that we all want and all the requirements of this job. I do think that we've had extremely amazing leaders in this town, like George Maurer, who served more than, it wasn't two different terms, but served three different times, two terms each time. We've had other amazing leaders that their input is valuable. And if we're doing something great, don't necessarily fix it. If someone's willing to give up more time, like Jean has been gracious enough to do in running for election, then let's leave it up to the people. If they want to keep him on for another four years, then vote him in.
I'm also against term limits at the local level. I think this volunteerism is an issue. And I would encourage anyone who feels like the council doesn't have a fresh perspective to run. I was mentored by an organization called Run for Something and endorsed by them that encourages under 40 leaders to consider running for office. But I also think that we need to all mentor each other and, you know, as our gracious moderator said, encourage each other to volunteer for these positions. I think that's more the problem in our community than a lack of a fresh perspective. The other thing is, walking around the town, or when my husband was worried that I'd get attention on me running, I said, "Well, how many people know all the names of their city council members? And I'd love to be arrogant enough to say that where I elected, everyone would know my name, but probably not." We are not a town, we are a town that's driven by service and results and not necessarily name recognition. So, I don't think that we have the problem that someone's going to get elected just because their name is X or Y. Someone will be elected because they bring a valid perspective to the council, and you all have a vote to choose who that will be.
You have a very famous last name.
I know, and no idea there was another, you know, politician Moran family dynasty, so.
It could be good, it could be bad.
Yeah, I'm staying out of it.
Well, this was directed at me and was directed at me in the last debate. And fair enough, I am a great believer in democracy. I am a great believer in following the rule of law. When I filled out my ballot designation statement and signed it and dated it, I put down Jean Goss, college professor, mayor. The county took a look at that with their due diligence. They reviewed my qualifications, and they put me on the ballot and they put me in your ballot statement, meaning what I am doing is legal, it's authorized, and, I might add, if it weren't, I wouldn't be sitting up here. I would never have run. So, first of all, just to put that to bed, there are no term limits here in city government. That straw vote or that advisory vote back in 1990, I take that seriously. I think that it's, the burden is on me to prove that I deserve another term. And I think that I'm doing that. I'm out walking the streets every day with that in mind. And if the voters don't vote for me, so be it. I don't, no one should be entitled to a seat in any office at all. I do support term limits at higher levels, particularly on our presidency, on our governor, particularly true executive power. I think that's a very wise thing to do. George Washington said, "No more than two term limits for executives." But the mayor here is nothing more than a member of the city council. It rotates each year. Should I get reelected? I won't be mayor next year. That's in itself a term limit. So, I'd like the people to have their choice here in Sierra Madre. I feel like I've done a pretty good job, and I will leave it with them.
Thank you. Now, I said there was only one more question, but I just want to put this one that has come to me on your mind. And it's something for every person considering running for council to think about. And this has to do with finding creative and innovative solutions during changing economic times that will preserve city services. I remember the time we were worried about our police and our fire. And we've been laid back, kicked back, proud, et cetera, with very little thought on how long that's going to last. And another aspect of city services is about the transportation. Metro has cut its services to town. So, the elderly, the disabled, the young people that you want to get to be more independent, there is no real public transportation. So, candidates for city council, finding ways, creative ways to provide, this is a self-service town. Everything we need should be provided right here. So, I leave that with you. And for your final question, and you have exactly three and a half minutes to figure this out. What have you done for Sierra Madre that makes you worthy of being elected to city council? And I think I started with Ed the last time. And so, Jean Goss, on you.
Wow.
And you can incorporate your closing statement in there.
So, this is part of the closing?
This is part of the closing statement?
Yeah.
Oh, we're doing closing statements, okay.
I didn't tell you too much, in case.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you to the Women's Club and to the chamber for putting this on. Thank you to everyone for coming, and thank you for everyone who's watching at home on TV. It's truly an honor to be your mayor. As a resident for 26 years, as a council member for eight years and eight months, I offer my many years of experience to service in this community. I kept the promise I made back in 2014 to help create a culture on the council of collegiality and collaboration, thereby enabling us to tackle and solve the many vexing problems that we're facing the city. The last council and the current council, over the last eight years, embodied that approach to governing, and it has paid off for our citizens. Working as a team, and I mean that, we have succeeded at meeting many challenges the city has faced, including steering the city through the COVID-19 crisis and emerging with a budget surplus. Steering the city or restoring the financial foundation through responsible fiscal management, properly supporting and funding our police department, professionalizing and supporting our fire departments, critical fire and emergency medical services, rebuilding our water infrastructure after decades of neglect, investment in capital projects, including a new police department building and a large solar array to help power our water system with clean energy, securing $10 million in funding from the state for our library and its renovation and expansion. And finally, the approval of the Meadows Project itself. I know, not everyone was satisfied with the outcome. But the process set up by the MOU and the final agreement negotiated by the Planning Commission over many meetings, supported unanimously by the city council, is a testament of government actually working. After the debacle of Juan Carter years ago, this accomplishment, this progress, should be welcome news to our city. As a political science professor for 30 years, I have taught the virtues of responsiveness and transparency. On the council, I've worked to put this into practice. For the last month and every four years going back to 2012, I campaigned door-to-door in this community. It's hard work, but it's worth it. I listen to people carefully while I'm standing on their doorsteps. Most seem very happy with the overall direction our city is headed in. And most seem very enthusiastic about my candidacy in particular. And when they point out problems, I write them down. I put them on my to-do list for the next term. If I'm reelected, I will take that to-do list and continue to collaborate with my council colleagues to innovate more improvements and ensure that the magic of our foothill village is maintained and preserved. My website is wwwjeanforsierramadre.com, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 8.
I believe local, action at the local level can change the world. I chose to raise my family here in Sierra Madre, and I want to build a better future for them right here in our community. That means building upon our legacy of charm to create a city that's even more walkable, bikeable, climate-friendly, family-friendly, and equitable. As a council member, I will focus on infrastructure and transportation with an eye toward net positive actions that both increase the charm of our city while decreasing its climate footprint. I'll focus on housing policies that benefit everyone in the community, and I will focus on public safety and wellness. Everyone has the right to feel safe. I'm an engineer, manager, and scientist. I previously co-managed a federal agency program with a $45 million budget. I have the knowledge and expertise to collaborate politically to balance a budget and build a prosperous future. My website is christinemoranforcouncil.com. You can visit there to learn more. To address the question, what have I done for Sierra Madre? You may have noticed I didn't inherit a multi-generational or even 20 years of experience here in Sierra Madre. I had to claw my way for an opportunity here, just as my mom had to claw her way into a wonderful community called Grandview Heights, Ohio, when she was widowed at a very young age in the countryside and needed to retool to become a teacher. She was lucky enough to apply for apartment after apartment and realize that they were, had a Grandview Heights address, but weren't actually in the school system until she was able to find one that she could barely afford and join that community. Now, because of her sacrifices, I was able to go to MIT, receive several degrees, train as a computer scientist, and be classified as wealthy by any means worldwide or even in the nation. However, I had a terrible trouble trying to find a house here. We searched for years and years and years. And when finally we got a house, it was about $800,000, and it didn't have a roof that was fire insurable. And so, then we had to come up with the money for that. What I want to leave is a legacy for my children, which I chose to live here, that they can have even more opportunities than my mother gave me. And I know Sierra Madre is the place where I want to do that. And I know that volunteering my valuable time and working with the wonderful other people in our community who volunteered their valuable time, I can make a small contribution with my expertise to do so. Thank you. Thank you.
So, addressing one of the other questions about how are we going to be creative and innovative about sustaining the resources and services that we have in Sierra Madre? It's been hard. There's times when we've talked about how are we going to keep the budget for the library? We've given up the pool, but we've jobbed it out, and it's, it's really that, I think that Sierra Madre's done a great job, and the council and city managers have done a good job at creating a great staff. Sierra Madre's staff is, is, obviously, they're not getting paid as much as all these other great cities around us, but they work harder and they are the experts in their field. When they don't know something, they do the research. So getting grants, receiving grants like such as the library is what helps keep our systems going. And our commissions help guide what is going to be the choices they make to keep those going and what we're going to give the services to Sierra Madre that they deserve. Also being creative and having amazing council and, and finance directors that help us budget appropriately, recreating resources and reserves. Sierra Madre has great reserves in finance right now and their resources as well as their water, and I think that's a great way to continue offering these services, as well as reaching out to the Sierra Madre Community Foundation and the other charitable groups in Sierra Madre that help with that. What have I done for Sierra Madre? Well, I firmly have always, always just been a giver, almost to a detriment. So when someone needs something fixed, if someone needs COVID shots during COVID, I think I made appointments for probably, how many people did I make appointments? Probably like 100 people. Got online in the middle of the night, helped that. When someone needs something, I just find out how to do it and help. So that's probably one of the main reasons why I'm running for city council is like, well, what else can I do? What else can I give back? How else can I solve a problem? I'm a fixer, and I have great resources. I'm a teacher, so I'm really good at doing research on things and then trying to figure out the solution and how to describe that to the, to the public. I listen very effectively, which I've had to learn to do. It's always kind of hard to just listen. So listening to the different city council meetings and the Planning Commission and, and the constituents in Sierra Madre has been, kind of one of the goals is, is to hear everybody. So what have I done for Sierra Madre? I have volunteered more hours than I can even count. When I was on the fire department, we worked about 40 to 50 hours a week for free. So I've dedicated 15 years to that. I've given myself to all these other communities. When I retired from the fire department, the city was so gracious, they nominated me for, and awarded me with the Woman of the Year for the City of Sierra Madre. I was Hometown Hero for the parade, for the drive parade in 2016. And then, for the 41st Assembly District, Holden, Assemblyman Holden honored me as a Woman of Distinction in 2016 also. So I think that alludes to how much I give and how much I always plan on giving back to Sierra Madre. So that's why I'm running, and that's why I'm here. And I also have great endorsements from the fire department as well as the Fire Department Association. We need to make sure we maintain these great city staff, including our public safety. We have a new building being built for the police department. We need to make sure we get the fire department up to their standards, what they need, and keep Sierra Madre with the amazing firefighters and police officers and the city staff that we have. So that's one of my goals. Thank you.
Thanks again to, to the Women's Club and Chamber for, for hosting this forum today. It's been a good opportunity for all of you to get to know us and our positions on some of the issues. I've talked with a lot of residents in, during my campaign, who, who all believe that there needs to be more open communication between the residents and council. I agree, and I believe the best way to improve the communication is transparency and community input in the decisions our city makes. Whether at the staff level or council level, I want everyone to know why decisions are made, including the pros and cons of them. The one issue, and really the only issue that all residents want to know the candidate's position on, as I've gone door-to-door, is the Meadows Project that was approved by council and Measure HR. I haven't avoided the issue. I'm the only candidate who has stated their position on both of them. I'm all for the monastery's right to develop their property, but I'm against the deal council made with this developer. I'm against 42, 3,800 square foot homes on small lots. I'm, the, the developer's environmental, environmental impact report is flawed, and the project is inconsistent with our general plan to preserve the character of our, of our town. I'm for Measure HR. Unlike the yard signs popping up around town, the measure is not a violation of, of, of our property rights. It's not a taking under the Fifth Amendment or a violation of the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. The measure places the property in the hillside zone, which, which is a good thing. The hillside's stated purpose is to preserve and minimize environmental impacts on our hillsides and permit development sensitive to their character. Measure HR promotes these same goals and is a good compromise that would allow for more balanced development and would promote the goals of our general plan for development that is sensitive to the character of our hillsides. I'm also concerned about the precedent the project sets for other developers. One week after council passed the project, 90 acres at the Stone House property went up for sale, with the listing stating, "See city for development opportunities." This should be no surprise. I've tried to be open as to where I stand on the issues important to our city. I have a lot to offer and want what's best for our town. I believe my experience and background would be a real benefit to council as we tackle the tough issues that the city will be facing. My website is barforcitycouncil.com, and I hope you will vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you to the Women's Club and the Chamber for hosting this event, and for all of you attending. This is great. I didn't prepare a closing, but I just, I just do want to respond to a few things that were brought up, and I'll answer that question. What have I done for the community as well? I'll start there. I've managed and coached Sierra Madre Little League baseball teams for seven consecutive years. I was a Cub master for Troop, for, for Pac 110. I'm on the troop committee for Cub Scout Troop 110. I'm a merit badge counselor for 10 different merit badges for youth in our town. I don't only, only do things for the youth. Yes, I have three children that live here, but, and I think that if you design a city that's good for families, it's good for everybody. I was also, as you know, a board member on the Community Foundation. I devoted almost eight years of my life to that foundation, being a board member, the secretary, the treasurer, and ultimately the chair. And I left that chairship after I was elected to the position of city council by the city two years ago. I also served on a UUT Oversight Committee. I was on the last committee, and we, we were overseeing the, the way the monies were spent. And at that time, the UUT was going to start sunsetting. It actually did sunset for one year, and we were in fear of losing our fire department and our, well, at that time, just our police department. Two years later, or that same year, I was the chair of a special revenue committee, looking for creative ways on how to bring revenue into the city. The problem is, when you have a short timeline, it's hard to get creative. So we recommended bringing the UUT back, and that measure won by almost 80%. It was over 70%. What happened? Well, we got to keep our police department, and we have autonomy here. It's very important to have public safety. Two years later, there was a Measure D. I stepped up and I chaired that committee too. Not only did I chair Measure UUT two years previously, I chaired Measure D. If that would have passed, we would have probably disincorporated as a city. We would have definitely lost our police and fire department and probably our library. We would have lost our autonomy and our, and our say in this town. I've been serving for two years on this council. I, I do sit on subcommittees and liaisons of some of the committees and commissions. I, I think, but what's important is I bring a perspective that not a lot of people have. As an economist and a finance professor, I think about things like moral hazards and opportunity costs and negative and positive externalities of a decision that we're going to make. So I, I, I do have a different perspective. I do have a network of people that I talk to. I listen to lots of people. It's not only children groups. I have organizations that I've been a part of. I, I still talk to those individuals, and I ask their opinion on city issues, and they give me their input, and I listen. We could talk about Measure, Measure HR in the Meadows. We've been public, as far as Mayor Goss and myself, about, those were public meetings, and we talked about how we felt about those things in the public. Thank you. And I respectfully ask for your vote.
Then we want to thank all of the candidates for having the courage to step forward and be willing to step up to the plate in effort to gather your votes and to explain their positions. I deliberately did not ask the question of, will you vote for Measure HR? Because this is still America, and people still have the right to have their votes be private. So, thank you again. Stick around, because questions may come up that you may be asked to answer. We're going to take a seven-minute break. The speakers for pro and con Measure HR, we're going to ask you to come to the podium, stretch your legs, and remember, we are one big happy family.
Good. Please. Good.
Can I hear you, Fran?
Oh, yeah.
Representing no on Measure H R. I know and you know how much passion is involved when it comes to issues like development in Sierra Madre. And I'm going to remind everyone that come November 9th, or January 2nd, or whatever date, we are all still neighbors. I'm going to ask, wait, first, let me ask this. Does anybody personally own any of this land that we're going to be discussing tonight? Because if you don't have a personal stake investment in it, other than it being a neighboring property, we ask you to keep your emotions in check. We ask you not to insult each other. And I don't care if you get mad at me because I buy the most ink. I'll get you back next time. But it really, we can agree to disagree civilly. Okay? We ask you not to cut people off. We ask you not to boo, or harass, or hiss. Definitely no props.
Is speeding okay?
No. No, no, no. You have to be on your best behavior like when you were five years old and your mom was watching. Okay? So, we're going to, is there anybody here who doesn't know where this property is? Okay? Anybody here that doesn't have a vague history? And don't be ashamed. Anybody here that doesn't have a history of the monastery, and how long it's been here, where it's located, the streets impacted?
In the 90s, the monastery had an archery in the City Hall with the chamber and yes and no with the citizens. Because they, somebody wanted to build something on the monastery and have the monastery change its zoning. And monastery was adamant about not changing its, you know, zoning, keeping its property and everything, their lifestyle, the way it was. And it was a very long and drawn up thing. There's so many things are here. And so, I just wanted to bring that up. This isn't the first time that the monastery has been attacked on, you know, its property.
Okay.
And, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Also, the monastery currently is not a part of the hillside management zone. And I don't remember when we did that. When did we do the hillside management?
1994.
No, it was later than that. The last iteration was in the midst of Juan Carter being built.
That's when that was, before the 1996 general plan.
No, it was like, I didn't live here in 96. It was later.
It's been amended twice since.
Been amended. The last amendment was during the time of Juan Carter. So, that's what is binding legally today. And that is what the monastery, so Measure H R, the monastery currently is not included in the last rendition of the hillside management zone. So, for those of you who really came and don't know a lot about it, that's why it's an issue. It is not a part of the current hillside management zone. And that is, I'll let them explain the rest of it. However, I do want to, a couple of historical things. I believe it was 2013, the first time in this last iteration that the monastery, and the monastery is gone, by the way. We just call it the monastery. The earthquake took it out. But the last time the Passionate Fathers came to the city was right around 2013. And at that time, they were talking about building 100 homes. And then, the discussions went on for a while, and then we had the drought, and we had the moratorium, et cetera, and then the pandemic. So, this application has been for, before the city for a while. And as you all know, it has gone through all of the iterations of the Planning Commission and City Hall. And the bottom line is that the city did vote unanimously to approve the project as it had been submitted. So, what we're going to do tonight is try to answer your questions, whether therefore, whether you should vote yes, or whether you should vote no. And we're going to have two experts. Susan Newhausen, who is yes, and wants Measure H R to be voted upon, and the former mayor, John Capocha, who is no on Measure H R. So, we'll start, and I'm going to allow them each five minutes, five whole minutes, to begin. Now, yes, we said we'd start at 5:00 and end at 6:00. That didn't happen. But everybody seems to be calm with it. We will be flexible. We will give you as much time as we possibly can. And as long as we keep it civilized, shouldn't be a problem. I got an officer back there waiting for you. No, he's a citizen, wants to hear what's going on. All right. Susan, why don't you start? Okay. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Can somebody turn this up, please?
Yeah, it needs to be turned up.
Somebody in here? I don't, I've never been in this one.
Don't go in.
Yeah. It's kind of creepy. Wait, what? Five minutes.
Thank you.
Five minutes. Give a history on why Measure H R, how it came into be, et cetera. Remembering that the goal is that people will be more informed on your positions and the reason why, so that when they go back to vote, they'll be able to make an informed decision as residents of Sierra Madre.
Okay. Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Am I too loud?
No.
Okay. So, first, I want to thank the chamber and the Women's Club for hosting this, and for all of you for attending, and those that are also streaming it. I'm a Sierra Madre resident, a neighbor. I'm concerned about overdevelopment in our town, and that's why I encourage you to vote yes on Measure H R. So, as you heard, Measure H R rezones the Madre de la Rosa property from institutional to hillside residential. It is currently the only large parcel abutting the San Gabriel Mountains that is not zoned hillside. A yes vote on Measure H R will preserve this sensitive hillside by stopping overdevelopment. There can be no additional tract housing subdivisions, such as the Meadows at Bailey Canyon. And also, with a yes vote, there cannot be a large institution built, such as a school, which is allowed on institutional zoning. Please keep in mind, this has been an uphill battle with a lot of money rolling in from the Santa Monica-based developer of the Meadows tract housing project. They have funneled more than $140,000 through the Neighbors for Fairness PAC into unfair, untruthful ads and mailers to spread disinformation. And the, basically, to fool you into voting no on Measure H R, even if you want to stop overdevelopment. There's a line attributed to Mark Twain that goes something like, "A lie can travel halfway around the world before the truth can get its boots on." That's what's happening in Sierra Madre. And the lies keep coming, so much so, we can't even begin to counter all of them. We're just a grassroots group of volunteers. One big lie is that 68 mansions can be built under Measure H R. It just isn't true. As members of Protect Sierra Madre, or group name Protect Sierra Madre, people are determined to stop overdevelopment in our town. So, why on earth would we prefer 68 houses to 42 houses that we're dead set against? It defies logic. So, we can get into the specifics during questions, but let's talk about apples and apples. Currently, on the Madre de la Rosa's lower 17-acre parcel, the developer plans to build 42 McMansions. And I know some people don't like that term, but if you look it up, the definition of a McMansion is a too-large house on a too-small lot. And currently, under the specific plan, houses can be built up to 80% larger than is allowed under our residential code. On those same 17 acres, accounting for roads, under hillside zoning, there can only be seven houses, and they're on a minimum of two-acre lots. So, 42 houses versus seven houses, that's the comparison. If the Passionists of Chicago decide to sell the entire parcel, there are 35 buildable acres, not accounting for roads. So, in that case, there could be 17 houses on two-acre lots. Under the current specific plan, with the housing density of 4.6 houses per acre, there could be a total of 124 houses on those 35 acres. So, again, that's what it comes down to, on the entire 35 buildable acres, 124 houses versus 17 houses. Personally, I prefer the low-density underdevelopment of 17 houses, dotting the hillside, than the overdevelopment of 124 houses crammed side by side. 17 houses generates a lot less traffic, a lot less pollution, it uses a lot less water, and it's much more defensible against wildfire. So, hillside zoning, whether it's the Passionists maintaining the status quo, or land conservancy, or very-low-density housing, it's a far better alternative than a slew of tract houses built just 10 feet apart and 15 feet from the road. Or 42 houses in a huge institution, which is also allowed under institution. So, what would be possible with a no vote on H R? So, in closing, to paraphrase Joni Mitchell, "Do you want to pay paradise and put up the residential and institutional equivalent of a parking lot? Of course not. Vote yes on Measure H R." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I'm John Capocha. Lived here in town 40 years, served on the City Council for over eight years, and two times as mayor. And by the way, I really have no dog in this fight whatsoever, other than I just think this is a really bad idea. And it's not just my opinion. Some of our leaders in town, our current City Council, just some of the quotes from them. It's absurd and irresponsible, misguided and misleading, a disaster for our town. Now, this is a City Council. You just heard some of Mayor Goss's comments about accomplishments over the years. You know, what we have here is a really competent, thoughtful City Council. Why would they make statements like this out of the blue sky? These are not the people to take, to make statements like that likely. Now, there's a lot of reasons why this is a bad idea, but I'll just talk about some reasons that I think it's a bad idea. First of all, very deceptive. I mean, we were just accused of lying. Well, the original flyer that went out to get people to sign the, you know, sheet to put this on the ballot, had a flyer that showed a pure meadow with deer on it, and then an inland empire-style development where everything is stacked together, which are true tract houses, not like what the Meadows is, or what the monastery is proposing. So, number one, it was very deceptive. Talked to a lot of people that signed that petition. They believed that they were misled. They thought that Measure H R was going to prevent development of the meadow. So, it just starts with a lie versus 20 public hearings that have gone on by the City Council and others, where everything is documented in EIR that was fully studied and addressed. So, it doesn't save the meadow. It doesn't save water, trees, or wildlife. It's going to be developed. It will lead to more Arcadia-style McMansions, or whether you want to call them McMansions or just mansions. These are going to be really big ones. And yes, there will be more than seven. That is not my opinion. Now, you heard an opinion that can't be substantiated. At least, I've got something that's in our attorney's report that is on the website for anybody to look at. So, even if we're talking about the 42 houses area that is proposed for development, if H R passes, they can build 32 units on it, up to 6,500 and possibly more with ADUs, 6,500 square feet. So, this, and the other thing is, this really incentivizes the Passionists to abandon the property and sell the rest of it, because you're harming them economically by what's proposed here. They're not going to make the kind of money that they expected to get out of this with their proposal. And it will not be built with 42 tract-style housing. That is totally a lie. This is really unethical. And I'm going to appeal to the character of Sierra Madre on this one. This devalues the Madre de la Rosa property without compensating them. This is taking their rights. They have rights today under institutional development. They chose to negotiate with the city to propose housing instead, because it's less of an environmental impact to all the neighbors around it, and to their own ministry, which they intend to keep going for as long as they possibly can. Basically, the proponents of this measure were really too lazy to propose a property tax assessment to buy the property. In other words, they want something, but they don't want to pay for it. They know it's easier to convince you with this deception to vote for something than it is to actually get people to put their money where their mouth is and pay for what they're taking from the monastery.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. It deprives taxpayers of benefits. A three-acre park that was negotiated, $1 million for water, $250,000 for police. And the worst thing is, this is going to embroil Sierra Madre in needless and costly litigation, further depriving you taxpayers of getting your streets fixed and the sidewalks repaired, and putting us back into the Stone Ages where we've suffered in the past from endless litigation. Thank you.
Okay. And I encourage you, remind you to, if you have any comments or questions you'd like considered, just raise your hand. Jeanette is in the back, and Deb Sheridan, and they will come and get, we have some over here. All right. This question needs clarification. Several people have asked this. So, I'm going to ask you both to interpret the term net zero water impact. Susan, you started, so I'm going to start with John and ask for your definition of the term net zero water impact.
Okay. This is an idea that-
A minute and a half.
This is an idea that actually originated with our City Council, is if this was going to be developed, how can we protect the water use? Because we know that's an issue with people. You know, we're asking people to cut back on their water. So, what we mean by net zero use is that they are, and I'll just summarize it, they're going to purchase a million dollars' worth of water, and I can't do the math for you anymore, I'm not on the council, haven't been off for two years. But it was calculated over a 30-year period of time, whatever new additional water was going to be used by the development would be paid for in advance. So, that's where that almost $1 million comes from. We're buying the water so that you, the Sierra Madre utility customers, don't have to pay the extra increment of purchased water from the development. That's, to summarize it. I hope it's clear.
Susan?
So, the true definition of net zero water use is that it's a closed system. The amount of water taken out is the exact same as the amount of water taken in. And so, in order for them to actually have a net zero system, they would need to have their own wastewater treatment plant, because they would need to be generating their own water. So, the term net zero water use has always been false. In terms of them buying their water, there is no water currently to purchase. We're in the middle of a 2,000-year-old, 2,000-year, 200-year drought. There is no water to purchase. So, they're providing the city with a million dollars to fix water leaks or whatever. But that doesn't account for the fact that as water resources continue to get more and more scarce, they are not buying the water in advance. That water is still going to have to be available. And again, if you then went to, you want to talk about 32 houses, that 32 is, you can have-
Thirty seconds.
Okay. 16, 16 lots is what you want to say. So, there'd be eight houses. Each homeowner, if they want, could split it to make 16 individual lots, and then those there could be an ADU on each. So, that would be 32. The equivalent is 126. You seem to have forgotten to mention that on your table. So, you're not, again, you're still not talking apples and apples. And the amount of water needed for seven houses is-
Mine.
One-sixth for 42 houses.
Okay. All right. I have a question for the benefit of the audience. Do these houses have gray water systems as part of the plan?
I believe they do, but I can't, I can't say for certain. Maybe there's somebody in the audience that does, somebody's shaking their head yes over here.
Yes. Okay. Susan, are you aware of that?
Yeah, no, I also agree. I think they have gray water system.
And would somebody explain to the audience what gray water systems are?
I'd be glad to.
Oh, good.
Okay. It's just taking your water from your kitchen sink, your laundry, and other, you know, not from your toilet, but from the other sources that go into your drain, and pushing it out into the landscape to, landscape, to irrigate your landscape.
Thank you. Okay. So, these questions are, this is, it was more easier, it was easier with the City Council. Let's see. Is it true that if H R passes, the monastery will have to go to a city referendum for any changes to their building?
Am I first this time?
Yes.
That is actually, that is absolutely not factual. Under hillside zoning, under, read it here, let me find the quote, so I don't get it wrong. The Passionists can continue doing everything they have been doing. So, the change from institutional to hillside zoning means that they're what's called a non-conforming, or, yeah, non-conforming use, but it does not prevent them from doing anything. It does not prevent them. They can add on, they can add a new building, they can do everything they want. And why that is, is under the RLUIPA, which is a religious law, basically, it involves places of worship, covers a broad range of religious uses, and so, it would also cover everything the Passionists wanted to do under Sierra Madre Municipal Code 17.56. So, there's actually nothing that they would be prevented from doing. They can do everything they want. Basically, the hillside R1 is the same as R1 in terms of this aspect. They would need to apply for a conditional use permit, but if they wanted to do any kind of remodeling or adding new buildings, they would need a permit regardless. This is just conditional use, and there is no, absolutely no reason, under Chapter 17.56, that they would be denied that.
John, would you like to be first?
That's very misleading. And again, I'm not giving you my opinion. I'm going to go from the text of the initiative. First of all, the intent of, the intent of the initiative is to permit the continued operation without expansion, significant physical alteration or change in use as a non-conforming use. Then later on, under Section 5, it says, "The intent of the voters, that Sierra Madre retains its authority consistent with the limitations of the hillside residential zone, hillside management zone, to regulate," et cetera, et cetera. However, it's "the intent of the voters that no such authority shall be exercised in a manner that undermines or is consistent with the hillside ordinance unless an amendment of this initiative is approved by the voters." So, it's right in the text of the initiative.
As long as it, actually, if you look at the legal analysis that was done by our land use attorney, it's clear that because of the exception under SMC, 17.56050, it's all allowed. So, you can't just, you're taking that out of context. You need to read the entire-
That's not what our city attorney's analysis says.
No, I think our city attorney has changed-
This will lead to more litigation.
Well, anyone can file a nuisance lawsuit, I agree.
Yep, and it will happen.
Okay. I have a question. One of the things that a number of people have brought up, and actually, it was a phone call and not something here, and it may have been overlooked by a lot of people, but as of January 1st, 2019, and January 1st, 2020, and maybe 2021, maybe it's 2020 and 2021, the state of California has two, at least two, perhaps three, depending on the circumstances, bills that take a lot of local control out, away from the cities. R1 residential zoning is one of them. I would like for you to share with the audience, if yes on H R passes, and you've used a lot of hypotheticals, but if it passes, and the monastery does not like it, and then withdraws its application, and sells the property, under SB 9, what can happen?
You're first.
We'll lose some control over the design standards. So, right now, even though we have an agreement in place, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman or Planning Commissioner Spears, but the design standards haven't been finalized yet, and that's something the Planning Commission is going to work on? Is that true?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So, what's that to say is that because this is a specific development, there are no inherent rights to this development, other than what's negotiated by the city, that we, as a city, have some say over the look of these houses, and again, the design standards of them. Under SB 9, we really don't have that. We have to be very objective about it, and our current code is not that objective. So, basically, we're going to lose control. You're going to have somebody wanting to come in and build a 6,500-foot mansion, you know, that's concrete and marble, and who knows what other kind of flashy things, and we'll really have no say over it. So, who are we serving here, you know? Right now, we have control over this, as to what's going to be built, and if we revert to Measure H R and SB 9, we have no say.
So, actually, under hillside zoning, if you look it up, the design standards, the R1 standards are the same standards as for hillside zoning. The amount of review that's done under R1 is the same as what will be done under hillside. Under SB 9, an individual homeowner can divide their lot into two. The homeowner has to agree to live there for three years. Who knows how many people would do that? I don't know. But they're then going to actually, you know, they're still going to have to apply for permits, they're still going to have to put in tract maps, they have to do everything the same. So, again, it's a misnomer to say that there's less review. The review is equivalent. You could argue that since the Planning Commission was stripped of some of their authority several years ago, that the whole city has more limited design review than they used to. But it's the same under hillside. If you look at the hillside ordinance, hillside residential, it's exactly the same as under R1 residential.
I just forgot to say, the source of my, this is not my opinion, the source is our attorney's opinion. So, I'm not making this up. You have an opinion here, but I've got something that you can go back and read yourself.
I'm not talking about an opinion. I'm talking about if you actually go and read the hillside zoning, what it actually says. You know, I hate to tell you this, but the city attorney seems to forget things. He forgot the fact that, you know-
All right. We're not going to bash the city attorney? Okay. All right. And when I say we're not going to bash the city attorney, he's not here. So, he can't respond. And I think that's only fair, and so far, the city hasn't fired him, so he must be doing something right. There is also the concern that we're, currently, the argument is about housing. There's no restriction for the monastery doing something other than housing. That would be less like the character of Sierra Madre. Has that been taken into consideration by yes on H R?
And that's actually a good part of why yes for H R is there. Under hillside zoning- Under hillside zoning, they cannot build a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-square-foot institution. Under their current zoning, they can build a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-square-foot institution. You know, we're talking about, there's this thirty-six, thirty-five acres of buildable land. Currently, the Meadows is the bottom seventeen. We have the additional eighteen above, they could build a giant institution. You'd then have this huge institution as well as forty-two houses. That's a major problem. Under measure H R, a big institution, no institution can be built.
John, did you want to respond?
Well, first of all, to something, to build something that big, you'd have to go through the environmental impact review process again, so if there were things that needed to be mitigated, they would have to be fixed. And if there were things that couldn't be fixed, then the council can just say no to it. So they don't have any, they don't have an entitlement to just build something that is so big that it can't, that it's exempt from environmental review. So that, that's my answer.
Question, again, this is directed to yes on H R. If H R passes, how long would this delay any development?
Development, I mean, you know, the Passionists of Chicago currently own the land. If there's a status quo, you know, there aren't going to be houses built under hillside. I guess I'm not sure what the, if it's referring to the Meadows project, I don't know what the answer to that is.
That's my question. So it just seems like there's a lot of history, maybe going back like ten years or something. I just don't want to see this piece of land empty for the next ten years, but that with passing H R, like have, have a greater chance of the lot being empty for a long time?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
It'll be empty for a long time because we're going to be tied up in litigation, just like we have been with One Carter. So first of all, the first thing, the monastery has already said publicly that they will fight this, they're going to challenge it, and it's their right to do so. Who knows how long it could take to resolve that litigation? So if you look at One Carter as an example, it could take fifteen years before something's built.
I guess back to your point, I mean, I actually, I would love if that was bought by a land conservancy. The Wildland Land Conservancy actually wanted to buy that land, and because the Passionists were already in talks with New Urban West, nobody would consider it. The city mayor at the time wouldn't let them come present, so I would actually love for that land to stay open. I think that would be the best option. It's a sensitive hillside area that has endangered species, it has all sorts of species that live there. Why would we want them gone from development? I don't.
All right. It would be nice if we could, if we're describing the property, if we're talking about the development, et cetera. Who owns it? I don't, I don't think it's fair to say the ownership is from Chicago because there are some, most people really want to get down to the bottom line. How will yes or no impact my life in Sierra Madre? So it doesn't matter that it's owned by, and in, no offense Catholics, and I've worked with Catholics for many years, so don't be mad, but there are so many layers that while it may say the Diocese of Chicago or whatever, that's not relevant, nor is it relevant who the developer is. Because if the property is developed, somebody, some company is going to do it. So I find those, those adjectives to be a bit prejudicial. So if we can talk about the project and its impact without attaching a developer's name to it, or, you know, the boogeyman to it, it would be much better. One of the things that has not, we, it has been mentioned, One Carter, and the history of One Carter may have a lesson for us and help people decide what it is that we can look forward to. As you've already stated, and everybody has acknowledged, currently, the law, the hillside management zone, does not include that property. Am I correct?
Right.
Okay. And the law, in the broader sense, doesn't, generally not look favorable on things they call situational zoning. That is, it's zoned one way, and then you find out somebody's going to do something with it, and you want to change the zoning. So when we talk about lawsuits, it isn't, it isn't necessarily just from a practical sense and the fact that the city is afraid of lawsuits, but we should have learned a lesson with One Carter. The hillside management zone, the last iteration of it, came about after, after the property had changed hands several times and somebody came up with this grandiose idea of building, putting houses on it. And to this day, I can't even remember when that started, not that my memory's that long, but they are just now getting to the point that they're building houses, and nobody liked those houses. And that was actually a rowdy a crowd, you guys are wonderful. One Carter was a really rowdy crowd. So it behooves the, the voting population and the proponents and the opponents to really look at this practically. This is, this is something that, in my opinion, and I'm going to give an opinion now, we allow to happen because we should have done something before.
Can I, can I address this? I'd like to talk.
In one second. It's not to say that yes on H R is a bad thing, or no on H R is right, it's just to, we have to look at the reality of the situation we are currently in, and what the impact of your vote is going, what situation is going to put the city in.
Yeah, this, this is, the One Carter is the exact opposite in one sense. One Carter was zoned residential, and the, the institution that bought the property asked the city council to change the zoning to institutional. It's the exact opposite of what we had here. The environmental impact report of that showed that, I remember the one thing about it, was that it was going to require a traffic signal in the middle of Sierra Madre at Baldwin, and you're saying that's not true? Okay.
You're talking Marinath?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the early iteration.
Okay.
Talking about the houses now.
Anyway, and Glenn, you, you were on the council then, former Mayor Lambden, but the idea was that the council rejected it because of the impact and preferred instead residential housing because that's what it's zoned for. They did not have to accept the proposal that was put before them. So this one is the opposite, where the, the Madre de la Rosa proposed a residential development because an institutional development was more impactful to them. They may have been able to make more money from an institutional development, but because they want to retain their mission as it is in Sierra Madre, they proposed something less impactful and also gave us some concessions like a three-acre park, purchasing the water, and helping our fire department with their new building. So again, if you look at the lesson of One Carter, is, our problem in Sierra Madre is that we didn't buy the property. We could have had an initiative to tax people and buy the property, no, but it just turned into litigation. And that's the same situation we have here. At least eight years ago, preserves, pardon me?
We're over.
Oh, okay, I'll come back to that one later.
Okay. But one correction, what my reference was not to the Marinatha, that was putting up a high school. My reference is to the litigation regarding the housing, the housing, and that's what just recently, in the last twelve months, finally, there has been some agreement to go forward, but we were in sort of the same situation. We did a hillside management zone, we revised it, and what they wanted to build, residences, didn't comply. And that was years of litigation. Okay, next question. Let's see. Well, let's see, I don't have a lot of questions here, they all kind of say the same thing. Does any, anybody else have a comment? Susan, do you want to say something else?
I mean, I'll have a final closing.
No, we're not, I don't think we're ready for.
Yeah, all right, so.
We are ready for final closing almost. Go ahead.
So the sixty-eight, the sixty-eight mansions that are, keep being thrown around, I just want to comment on the difference between the forty-two, under the specific plan, what is going on versus what you could do under H R. So under H R, you have a house, granted, it can be up to sixty-five-hundred square feet, including all the garages, and if they want to build an A D U, that is part of that sixty-five-hundred square feet, read the code. And if you think about it, there's something called the floor area to lot ratio, and that ratio is seven point five percent. So that means that basically, that large house would be a dot on that two-acre lot. You compare that to the maximum size house in the Meadows project, which is thirty-nine-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet, on the smallest lot is seventy-eight-hundred, that's up to fifty-one percent floor area ratio. Think about that. So you have a dot on the landscape versus the other. And what's not being said is, I agree, mansions, it's going to take people with money, but so is the Meadows project. Those houses are going to be probably two-point-five to four million dollars. So we're not talking about that any of this is housing for people that need housing, we're talking about that this is all for wealthy people. So let's not say, oh, this mansion's terrible on two acres versus, you know, another four million dollar house on a seventy-eight-hundred square foot lot.
Okay, again, I'm going to point to documentation that's on our website.
And that's wrong. If you read the code, it's not correct.
She has an opinion that our, our city attorney is not correct, but we pay the city attorney well to advise the city to keep us out of these litigous situations. Anyway, here it is, sixty-eight units, and even if we were only talking about the seventeen-acre that is proposed today, thirty-two units. So here we are in a situation where there's going to be litigation because we're trying to force something on somebody for a difference of, for density, and this is all really, the neighbors around the property are the ones most concerned about this. I mean, in my experience as a, a general manager at A T and T, and also as a city council person, always try to negotiate something that is acceptable to both sides. But what happens when you impose your will on somebody, you're going to get litigation, and it's costly, and it's going to deprive citizens of Sierra Madre of their, the money that they spend in taxes that benefits them, and you're just going to be giving it to lawyers for, because you've got some selfish people that want to preserve and get the other houses maybe a little bit further from them. Remember, this is going to be developed.
Okay. Do you want to comment?
Oh, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I'm almost like at a loss of where to start with that. For one thing, the people in Protect Sierra Madre, they're from all across Sierra Madre, they're not all in that neighborhood, and there actually is a major impact on that northwest neighborhood. And so, yeah, money's being given to the fire department. Why isn't money being given to put sidewalks on Lima? Why isn't money going to be given to close off Grove Street, which is already not usable? You know, the amount of traffic is not being considered, people walk on those streets, it's, it's going to be a dangerous place, which is why much less under, underdevelopment is preferable to overdevelopment. You know, you keep showing your little schema there, which actually is incorrect. If you read the code, city lawyers aren't always correct. If you read the code, and on that same sixty-eight houses with the Meadows, you would have three-hundred-and-seventy-two units when you start throwing in A D U. So three-hundred-and-seventy-two versus sixty-eight, again, I would go with sixty-eight under, any day over three-hundred-and-seventy-two. And all of those are ridiculous hypotheticals, we're really talking on the lower seventeen versus forty-two, I mean, seven versus forty-two, or seventeen versus a hundred-and-twenty-four.
Okay. There've been a lot of hypotheticals here, but there are some facts that people should consider and should be aware of. And I'm going to read an excerpt from the impartial analysis of measure H R. Measure H R would change the Madre de la Rosa property's general plan, land use designation, the general plan is Sierra Madre's general plan, and the current land use designation, it would change it to residential low-density hillside and zoning designation to hillside management. Residential uses are permitted in the hillside management zone. Under state law, single-family homes, duplexes, and accessory dwelling units are allowed with a permit approved ministerially without a public hearing by the director of planning. Measure H R does not amend the general plan, land use, or zoning designation for any other property in the city, only Madre de la Rosa property and any subdivisions. The existing retreat, retreat center could, would be converted. As such, it may be maintained and repaired, but under the zoning code, it is unclear whether the retreat center could be altered or enlarged. Okay, and it goes on to, to point out some of the challenges with measure H R in terms of long-term, what the monastery can and cannot do, and most importantly, it does not amend the general plan. So do you have a response to that?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking me. Basically, again, if you read our lawyer's response, the initiative permits the continued operation of Madre de la Rosa, it permits them to basically expand their use as long as they obtain a conditional, minor conditional use permit. It actually doesn't prevent them from doing anything.
It prevents them from building those houses, though?
It prevents them from building, oh, the lower, because they don't meet the, they no longer meet hillside requirements of a minimum of a house on two acres, is that what you're asking me?
No, I was reading from the city attorney's analysis of the measure, and it, it just appears, and for all of you, this is not an ad, but in this week's edition of the Mountain View's news, on page four, not my words, there's a complete breakdown of the city attorney's impartial analysis, there's the argument in favor of measure H R and a rebuttal to the argument against measure H R. And my suggestion is that you read it carefully because it, it's, it's not a simple issue, it's not as simple as saying, I don't want more traffic, it's not as simple as saying, I don't like that kind of house, because remember, and I'm going to say One Carter again, how many people in this room like what they're building in, at One Carter?
I had to vote for him.
He voted for it, he was on planning commission. And the bottom line is, they're oversized, I, I remember distinctly this commissioner, pardon the expression, bitching about the balconies in the back. No one liked it, it was different. But how much money has the city spent and gotten nowhere? Because in the end, they have pretty much, they acquiesced a bit, but they have pretty much what they said they were going to build in the first place. They would do some, some houses, but the bottom line is that in issues like this, it becomes very complicated, and we have to be practical when we read, you read, as individuals, and consider how this will impact your life. And the, the most obvious thing is that right now, that property is not part of the hillside management zone. So measure H R, how are you going, if yes on measure H R passes, how are you going to protect the city? protect the city against the lawsuit that is sure to come or a situation on zoning? Because there's no other property, no other property in Sierra Madre, including Stonehouse that somebody brought up earlier, that this applies to.
I'm not a lawyer. I can't answer that question. You know, if our land use lawyer was here, I'm sure she could answer that question, but I'm not a lawyer. And again, this may be a different situation than One Carter because the zoning was different. So, this is changing the only property abutting the hillside that is not zoned hillside. And part of the reason, in my opinion, and again, I'm not a lawyer, is because the passionists decided to start developing it residentially, and what they did was put in what's a specific plan, and that specific plan does not adhere to our general code and our municipal code. And by state law, six-five-four-five-four, the specific plan is supposed to be consistent with the general plan, and it's not. Of course, it's a matter, you know, all these are gray, and it's a matter of opinion, and somebody could say, well, it conforms with everything except for the R-one code, so therefore, it's okay. But that's the problem. It's a specific plan. It supersedes our general plan. It supersedes our municipal code. It, you know, it basically, to me, drove the need for Measure HR. Basically, I, to me, our city council failed to protect Sierra Madre's long-term interests and quality of life, and so Measure HR, in that case, became the best option.
And I, I want to counter something because of what she said wasn't true, is, you know, the properties, if you look at a map, on both sides of the property in question, going right up to the hillsides are not hillside ordinance. This sits down here. The properties around it, the Meadows itself, are not hillside. Now, if you're talking about the property that goes way up, yes, that is, that would, should be, if it, you know, was subject to development. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about putting a hillside development zone in an area surrounded by R-one zoning.
Well, A, I mean, those houses have been there a lot longer, B, it's not surrounded. I don't think Bailey Canyon, as far as I can tell.
On the other side of Bailey Canyon.
We're not, you have Bailey Canyon, you can't just skip.
Well.
And One Carter actually is probably at the exact, it's north of Carter. It's the same thing. It's the same area.
It's all R-one.
It's the only large parcel.
Well, the only large parcel, but it sits in the middle of R-one.
Well, you could argue the same thing about Stonegate, or not Stonegate, Um, Car, One Carter is at the same, One Carter is north of Carter.
We can talk about that when we have a debate on One, on One Carter. We're talking about the monastery.
Right, and this is also north of Carter. You know, it doesn't make sense.
It's surrounded by R-one. That's a fact.
No, you don't, Bailey Canyon is not, Bailey Canyon is.
Just move to the other side, going way up, the other side.
I'm sorry, you can't just decide that you're skipping.
Come on, you're stretching.
Okay. It is a fact that when the hillside management zone, its last amendment, it did not include that property. But I think that perhaps, I'm going to make a suggestion, because it is twenty minutes to seven.
Okay.
I'm going to make a suggestion, and I'm going to hate myself for making this suggestion. However, you have an attorney, the city has an attorney, and perhaps, we can have a Zoom meeting really quick and allow residents, and let the two attorneys discuss the pros and cons and their positions, and the audience can dial in and hear it. Because there's been a lot of speculation about what could happen or what couldn't happen, but I think that people are really interested in knowing what the impact of their vote will be. Does that sound reasonable to you guys?
Yes.
I doubt that the attorneys will do that.
Our city attorney has an opinion. Regardless of what people say, he has no horse in the game. He is to represent the city. He's not an advocate for a special interest group. When you have a, an attorney that's an advocate for a special interest group, that's what they are paid to do, to advocate on their behalf. And I don't think that we should put our city attorney into a position where he's advocating for anything other than the good of the city.
Okay. What if?
We'd love to have the developers think they have an attorney.
Oh, right, and I'm sure you guys will trust the developer's attorney, right?
It's not going to work.
Okay, that, what did you say?
Well, that situation would be more apples now, because again, our city attorney is for the city and only for the city. They're not on horse in the game either way.
Okay.
Their attorney is an advocate for their position.
Okay.
They're not going to do it.
First, and then you.
The city's attorney is not a land use attorney. He's a general attorney. Ours is a specific land use attorney.
That's not what she's asking, though. She's asking.
All right, okay. So, we can't use the city attorney?
Can I, can I?
Yes.
Except that Mayor Capocchio voted specifically what the city attorney said, not what any other attorney said.
Right.
He's saying what this city attorney said is going to get us in trouble. Am I quoting you correctly?
He, all he is, he has given his advice as to the impacts of this development, and he has also said that Modern Dolorosa has stated that they will sue if it passes. So, law, yeah, litigation is pretty much guaranteed.
No, I think Barbara's point, I think Barbara's point is that you're saying that the city attorney stated something, so then if that was specifically stated by the city attorney, why shouldn't the city attorney then be able to discuss it with the land use attorney?
Well, in my opinion.
That's what I was going to.
Can I give my opinion? I'm here for this purpose, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to give my opinion on this. I don't think two attorneys with a potential of litigation are going to be up here tipping their hand about what their legal arguments are going to be.
Okay. Very good point.
Okay.
Very good point. That is a good point. So, the question then becomes, how do you, we, we, we need people to really analyze, in my opinion, okay? I don't think, is everybody clear on what, what their choices are and the impact on it after this? Okay.
Can anyone, like, say what are the costs of litigation? Like, say with litigation, let's say HR is, and with litigation, what are the costs to the city?
Well, okay, from experience, it's unknown. Okay, I mean, it, they could, they could sue, the monastery could possibly ask for attorney's fee reimbursement, and we don't know, so how big a case are they going to make? How many lawyers are they going to hire? How determined are they to fight this? You know, we don't really know, like, what the dollar value or their points are where they're going to say, we're going to fight it up to a certain point and spend a certain amount before we bail. We don't know.
Yeah, and it, and it gets to be expensive. I remember one news story, we spent seven-hundred thousand dollars, and I can't even remember what it was for.
I think this conjecture is not actually helpful, because we don't really know. We don't know if it would be a nuisance lawsuit that could be quickly dismissed. It's just, it's just conjecture. I don't, I just don't see that this is helpful.
I would disagree. If they've already stated.
They've already stated, but it could still be a nuisance lawsuit that could be rapidly dismissed. We don't, we don't know.
There was a question that was brought forth regarding the writ that HR did. Hold on a second. You guys did a writ, you guys being.
Protect Sierra Madre.
Yes, on HR.
Yes.
The attorney did give an analysis of various positions. Some were more serious than others, and we have more exposure for some of the points than others, yes.
Yeah, but, and there was a writ that, and you asked what it was about, the lawsuit. Someone referred to it as a lawsuit. And that was a challenge by the proponents of Measure HR about the language that is on your ballot, that the city submitted, and they used two words, a developer, and the sum total of that request before the court, is that the judge, and that too was in the paper, but I believe is also online with the city site, made the city drop the words "a developer," and nothing else in that language changed. So, for the person who asked about the lawsuit, that's, that's what it was. And on your ballot that you all should have, you will see it, the sentence that talks about sixty-eight units, no longer says "a developer" could do sixty-eight units, it just says sixty-eight units. Sounds like the city is going, okay. A question was asked, is the monastery for Measure HR or against Measure HR? Now, this is indicative of how polluted this discussion has become and how confusing it is. If yes on Measure HR wins, they want to win, knowing that the people who voted for them understood what they were voting for. If no on HR prevails, they want to win with people understanding what they voted for. The question is, the monastery, as I understand it, is not in favor of Measure HR. Okay?
They are adamantly opposed to Measure HR.
And you know, that has been a major problem. There are so many people that are confused about what yes on HR means and what no on HR means, and we've had, you know, people say, oh, I thought no meant that it wouldn't be overdeveloped. And so, again, this is because of so much disinformation, the hundred-and-forty thousand dollars that the developer has spent to do this. Can we, I think we're.
We're not done yet. And it is true, and I think this is the most, probably the most important question that has been asked, if someone has a question about what this will do. The monastery is against HR for obvious reasons. They're not doing this because they just want to do something. They want to build those houses. So, for the person who asked that, the monastery is against Measure HR, and they would be a no vote if they had one, and, and their supporters would probably be voting no. We still have a lot of doubt, but the bottom line is, you have property that is not currently restricted by the hillside management zone, and in a nutshell, Measure HR is suggesting putting it there. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, Measure HR is changing it from institutional to hillside zoning in order to prevent continued overdevelopment of this sensitive hillside.
So, I think, I'm at a stalemate, since we can't do a Zoom meeting unless we do them independently, and no one else has any other questions, we're going to have to rely, do your homework. Go to the city's website, go to the no-on-HR website, go to the yes-on-HR website, and I hope that everybody has factual, not fictional, made up, no conjecture. It's not, we, we, tomorrow is something we need to worry about, but today, today you need to decide on what is going to have the greatest impact on your lives as a resident of Sierra Madre. Is this project going to make it better or worse? If opposing it, is it going to make your, your life better or worse? You have to do your homework, and you have to decide.
Can we have our final closing?
In a minute.
Okay.
People named Susan are just a problem.
I'm just hungry, sorry.
Okay, so, yes.
Can we clarify one thing, because I hear a lot of misunderstanding, that if HR passes, it does not prevent the building of homes on that property, amongst other things, it just changes what can be built, because there is a lot of misunderstanding amongst residents. They think if they vote for HR, it will make it so that that open space remains open space. And can we clarify that that's not the case?
Susan?
Correct. Under hillside zoning, people, there can be a house built on every two acres. Will it happen? Who knows? You know, you'd have to find a developer that wants to put, thinks he can make money, he or she can make money on doing that low-level development.
You have to find a property owner who wants to do that.
Correct.
But it does not prevent the building of homes on that.
Correct. There can be, yes, homes built, one house every two acres.
Okay. Anything else? That was a good question, should have asked a long time ago.
Does the city have to defend the lawsuit? And if they refuse to, are the proponents going to personally defend it? Or is the city just going to throw up their hands and say, we lose?
I'm not the city attorney. I'm not answering that. Here, here's rule number one in class number one. Yes, tell them.
Okay, the city has got to defend it because the, hypothetically, the voters would, acting on behalf of the city, would have imposed these draconian.
Yes.
You have taken away for no money the right to build an institutional use.
Yes.
And without having done any analysis, I can figure that I can find a serious legal basis. And so, basically, what we are being told by the HR people is that we can get this, most of the property rights up there pre-ferdum.
Yeah.
That's essentially what it says. And if you think that's not a lawsuit with the city, because the city, acting through citizens, has done this.
Excuse me, are you a land use lawyer, or is this just your opinion? I mean, again, it's just an opinion. Everybody, remember, everybody has an opinion. We have no experts.
I'll tell you what. Am I a quote, "land use lawyer"?
Well, I mean, we could have you debate our land use attorney. I mean, you know, that would work.
I don't pretend to be that, but I have been a lawyer in the States since nineteen-sixty-six. I deal, among other things, in real estate.
Right, so would you like to, to have a Zoom call with our land use lawyer and discuss this? I mean, okay.
Zoom calls out the table, by the way.
All I can do is, I see a lawsuit with real substance brewing, and basically, the HR people are saying, trust us, this is so clearly right, that it will be dismissed as a frivolous lawsuit.
Yeah.
It'll not, won't go anywhere. And what I'm telling you is, anytime you have taken away this amount of, we have a speaker up front already.
Yeah.
Gary? Well, wait a minute, hold on. Go ahead and finish, Gary.
Wait.
What I'm saying is that if you have managed to, you think, take away all substantial value.
Okay.
That you've got a lawsuit on your hands, you've got a big lawsuit on your hands, and the stakes are enormous.
Well, I have someone else. I have someone else. Hold on, hold on. Gary Hood has got his hand up.
Just a simple question here. Your retreat center has asked to change the zoning to R-one. Why do they not want to follow our codes and our general plan? What's wrong with that? If they just follow our existing codes and general plan, they don't want to do that, and it's very confusing to us.
I'm going to ask the commissioner to speak.
So, one of the first things that happened was that the, the area was, had a specific plan, which is different than your general plan. So, there was a specific plan outlined for the use of that land, and the specific plan included the sizes of the lots and the homes and the, the inclusion of a park. So, it is different than general zoning, R-one zoning. Does that make sense? Just like at Number One Carter, we had to go through all kinds of, you know, contortions. The good news about Number One Carter is that the, the city council at the time had a very good attorney, and the resolution was that the, even, hillside was, was, hillside development, hillside, the hillside ordinance was because we have huge vertical lots that are difficult to build on. And so, somebody may have a, a giant, you know, three-acre lot, but there's only a very small place on that lot for a house. And in the, and the resolution for the, for Number One Carter was that they determined how much the pad was, what size the pad was, for all those lots. And the size of the pad is the tail that wags a dog for the size of the house. So, even though you're sitting on a, you, you own a piece of property that's twenty acres, if most of it's vertical, you're going to only build on the, the horizontal part, and if you can define how big that part is, that determines how big the house is.
Okay.
So, you know, kudos to the, to the, to the, to the city council and their legal advice at the time, because they determined how big those houses are that we're going to see as they come to us. They are coming to us because. They are coming to us because the resolution for the lawsuits at One Carter said the city has the right to do design review. And the city's planning commission spends long hours looking at all the details of all those, um, those specs or causes. And there is a book that you can see, download, that talks about what designs are acceptable and which ones are not. So we talked about not having, uh, windows that reflect down into the town. We talked about lighting that doesn't, that only, that only shines on the, on the, on the, the land itself and not onto your neighbor's land. We have a lot of rules on that. So HR was built because we have, we have places in town that are huge vertical lots that are difficult to build on, but because of floor area ratios that you talked about, theoretically, they said, well, I've got a, you know, a twelve acre house, I can build, a twelve acre lot, I can build this giant house. Well, no, you can't because of, it's, it's on the hillside now, it's in the hillside.
Okay, but back to the specific plan, it does, it has what they call an R1 overlay. So, I mean, in response to Gary's question. So it is being built as R1, except it's a special plan, so they can, so they can, so they can.
It's different than the R1 that.
Right, they don't have to follow any of the, yeah, they just don't follow any of the municipal code.
I'm going to call for rap, rap.
Response to this gentleman.
Yes.
And it's quick. On the, on the Madre de la Rosa website, they have what they put up just before they started doing all this, a, a fax, a frequently asked question. One of the questions is, why can't the city buy the land? Somebody asked, why can't the city buy the land? And they said that what we need, what we, what this property is worth for the land is between one and two million dollars per acre, and that the city does not have the money to pay one to two million dollars an acre for the land. So they are saying that even without the houses five years ago, they could sell 17 acres for, what does that come up to, 30?
A lot.
I'm really bad. Thirty-four million dollars. They're saying it was worth 34 million dollars five years ago. To be able to say that you're taking it without them having the right to get a value out of the land, you'd have to say that that isn't so. Nobody pays two to three million dollars an acre, and we know what an acre of land in Sierra Madre is going for now, so I guess it's probably more than that.
Susan, Susan.
Okay, I'm going to.
I mean, look, we've got a lot of stuff flying around here.
Okay.
And the city did an appraisal, had the property appraised, and we made a decision not to attempt to buy it, because even then, once you buy it, what do you do with it? Now you've got additional cost to maintain it. So, I mean, this can go on forever and ever here.
We're not gonna go on forever and ever, but I also got.
I'm hoping it wraps up soon.
An unverified text. And I'm pretty sure if I repeat this and it's wrong, uh, somebody will say it. Eighteen million dollars it cost us on One Carter, and we didn't get our way. Now, let's have a wrap up.
I went first before, so he should go first this term.
Here's what I want. You've got three minutes to tell us why people should vote no on Measure HR, and Susan, you will then have three minutes to say why they should vote yes on HR. But before they start, I'm gonna say it again. Do your homework, be a responsible voter. Go to every website that contains information on this project so you can make up your mind. Not the literature, not the sales literature, the things that they're willing to put in public that are fact, the applications that have been submitted to the planning commission, things that they would be accountable for. Okay? Do your homework. John?
Okay. It's a bad idea because to, I'm urging you to vote no on Measure HR. It's deceptive. It doesn't save the meadow property. Houses will be built, fewer, but bigger houses. It doesn't save water, trees, or wildlife. It'll lead to large mansions, and it could possibly displace the Retreat Center because they've got an economic situation that they're trying to correct. They are assessing all their properties all over the world. They want to keep their mission alive here, and their calculus is that if they sold the bottom 17 acres for an amount they had in mind, they could keep this. Other places all, all over the world and the United States, they've closed entirely to get the cash out. We want them to stay. We don't want to incent them to leave by taking rights from them. Okay, this is unethical. It devalues their property as a substitute for a negotiated settlement. As I said before, I think the proponents are lazy because they didn't.
Name calling, no name calling.
I'm, okay, I'm just saying that they had the opportunity to put something on the ballot years ago, about 10 years to be close, to buy the property. Why didn't they do it? It's because it's easier to deceive people into voting for something to take away the rights than it is to actually compensate them fairly for the property and the entitlement that they had. It constrains their ministry. As I said, it's right in the language that they wanna make this nonconforming, and in any case that is in conflict, that it needs to go to, to a vote of the people. It deprives our taxpayers of benefits. We get a three acre park out of this. When on any development in Sierra Madre did we get parkland out of it? Never. We're getting almost a million dollars in, for the net zero, and my opponent is absolutely correct, that's not gonna be spent directly on water, but on water-saving initiatives like fixing the pipelines. Uh, we're also going to get 250,000 for our police station. And worse, this will embroil Sierra Madre in needless and costly litigation, further depriving you folks, the taxpayers, of the benefits of the taxes that you pay. Thank you. Vote no on Measure HR. Okay.
And so I would like you to please vote yes on Measure HR because so much is at stake. And I just wanna make a few comments. So you're right, they're giving some concessions. You could, we don't know if the Passionists sold the lower 17 acres for hillside development. Again, the city could also ask for concessions. So saying that there are concessions now and there never would be in the future is again, something that is unknown. We're not taking away their property rights, they can still sell their property, they can continue and even expand its mission if they want. Under a nonconditional use permit, there is nothing that is stopping them from continuing to do everything they wanna do and continuing to do more. Whether they wanna sell it or not, I mean, it sounds like you're right. The Passionists have been selling property right and left, and they could easily change their mind and decide they want the additional big bucks. So Measure HR, what does it do? It stops construction of a slew of multimillion dollar McMansions in addition to the 42 that are already in the works. It stops a large institution of up to 270,000 square feet from ever being built. It prevents traffic in the adjacent neighborhoods from getting out of control. You have one-sixth of what could possibly be built compared to what's been proposed. Prevents traffic in the adjacent neighborhoods. It reduces the risk of fire by limiting housing density in this very high severity fire hazard zone. Again, it allows Madre de la Rosa to continue and expand its mission. It follows the city's general plan and municipal building codes unlike the specific plan created by the developer at the Meadows. It substantially reduces water use compared to the Meadows project and any additional plans the current developer has. And again, it's because you only have one house on every two acres instead of 4.6 houses on one acre. So in conclusion, under hillside zoning, extremely low density housing would allow for preserving much of the hillside's natural state instead of being scraped away for tract housing. It would be much less of a drain on scarce water resources, and the hillside zoning requirement of two acres will allow for 100 feet of defensible space around all homes, thus lessening the threat of deadly wildfires like the Bobcat Fire that took out whole neighborhoods. Hillside zoning, whether the status quo, result, land conservancy, or very low density housing is a far better alternative than a sea of tract houses allowable under the current zoning specific plan. Don't believe the disinformation being spewed out by the developer. Once they get their money, they'll go back to Santa Monica? They don't have to live with what they live behind, leave behind. Let's be environmentally responsible, and let's do all we can to keep the small town charm of Sierra Madre. That charm is a fragile thing, and once it's gone, it's gone forever. So please vote yes on Measure HR.
Okay. I wanna thank, I wanna thank both of you for coming. This has been very difficult, and I really wanna thank the audience. Some of your faces are new, some of you I've known a long time, and I really love the fact that we had a nice peaceful discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for moderating.
Hold, before you leave, before I get in a lot of trouble. Uh, I am the director of the chamber, among other things, and member of the Women's Club, but our media past president is here, who would like to say something in two seconds. Mary?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. So, um, Susan? So next week, you're writing about pros and cons.
As a past president of Sierra Madre Women's Club, I wanna say thank you very much for coming. This continues a decades, decades, decades-long tradition of biannual political education forums between us and the city and the Chamber of Commerce. And I wanna specifically thank the city of Sierra Madre for allowing us to use the city council chambers tonight and to make available the audiovisual equipment so that the majority of people in our city who choose to can actually join in and become educated as well. This is a first for the, for the Sierra Madre Women's Club. We've usually had it at our clubhouse, and I think this was an excellent venue, and thank you. I hope we have, are able to do it again.